So, welcome for the third installment of Town Hall Meetings. And again, it's after some food, after lunch, these type of things, so we'll try and keep everybody awake and we'll be peppy. The promise that I made to you all in the very last Town Hall Meeting was that I would speak less. So, and I believe in that one, there was some clapping and cheering. And I wanted to make sure that we get it back to the traditional format of each of the senior administrators being able to talk about their particular pertinent areas. So, we're doing that. So, bear with me for just a little bit. I'll open up, talk about some things from a high-level standpoint, and then turn it back over to the people that actually do work every day. So, if I'm you, and I'm sitting out in this audience, the very first question that I'm going to want my senior team to answer is what the heck's going on with volumes? The third floor's been shut too much, right? I think we were on a 26-day stretch there for a little bit. And why are volumes sitting the way they are? And what are the action plans around them? Prior to me getting to that, let me first explain that if you have that weird feeling in your gut about what is the financial security and the viability of this hospital going forward, if we have a floor closed, let me first go ahead and say, don't worry about that one. Because what you all have been able to do is flex your staffing and cut your expenses that even with the volumes that we're seeing today, with a floor closed, this hospital remains viable, is on very strong financial footing, and can continue on. Now then, what I don't want to minimize, though, is that I can sit here and say that, I can say that even with the volumes we have right now, we can continue to make money. Well, that's at my level, that's at a high organization level. What do I know? Is that what that comes is at a cost to you all. That means that we've got people that aren't getting their full shifts, right? They're being flexed down, they're not getting the hours they need, they're being flexed so hard, they just, they can't get it. And what that does, it triggers turnover, it does things. So, what I'm not trying to say is that the volumes are okay. What I want to do, though, is make sure that you understand that the doors of this hospital aren't going to close because of the volumes. We've actually got the expense management under control and look good. Now, it's just like in the last Town Hall, when I said, "I don't want us to be accountants, I want us to focus on the operations of the hospital." Keep that focus, okay? We'll be able to turn it over to Kim in a little while, she'll show you financials, she'll show you that we really are on good, solid footing. Again, never losing track that that does come at a personal cost, though, so we've got to get this thing going, we've got to get some growth in place. One of the ways that we are looking at getting the volume to increase is teleneurology. You may ask, why would teleneurology help? Well, first of all, let's explain what it is. Right now, if my mother were to come into this hospital and present to this ED, and she were to be coming in for some type of a stroke-related symptom, and it's on a Friday, okay? Friday, I'm the CEO, I'm looking at my own mother, I'm going to facilitate a transfer to another facility. Why? Because I know that while we may have neuro-coverage on that Friday, I don't have neuro-coverage over the weekend, and I don't have neuro-coverage coming up on Monday, but I do have it on Tuesdays, and Wednesdays, and Fridays, right? So, we have a goal, that we want as much volume coming into the hospital as possible. We want to keep as many patients here as possible. We need to have a margin, we need revenue. But this hospital is committed to a high level and a high standard of patient care. And what I would ask each of you to do is put programs in place and deliver care the way that you would want it delivered to your own mother. So, I'm telling you, as the CEO of Northcrest Medical Center, the best care for my mother for a neuro-related illness would be elsewhere. So, what we have is we've turned the ED into a very, very good neuro-transfer center. You come in, you're evaluated, it's identified that you have an acute neuro-type illness, and you get transferred somewhere else. Teleneurology. Teleneurology is a service delivered via iPad FaceTime. You train a nurse to be the eyes, well, not nurse, the eyes, but the hands of the physician, of the neurologist, to do a physical exam on the patient while the physician is watching via FaceTime. They can communicate with the patient, they can communicate with the nurse, they can communicate with the family in the room, they can get a full history, they can work that patient up entirely, put in a consult note, work with the ED physician, or the hospitalist, or whoever's taking care of that patient, and make sure the patient's taken care of appropriately, and you have full neuro-care and coverage 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. The hospitalist will now feel comfortable being able to take care of those patients and keep them here, the ED physicians will be comfortable doing a full evaluation and workup, and getting them transitioned up into the inpatient world. At that point, I would feel comfortable bringing my mother into this ED for a potentially neuro-related illness, have her seen and treated by an actual neurologist, and then get her upstairs and get her tucked into a bed, and I know that they're going to have that care. And that that same neurologist is going to come in via iPhone, or FaceTime, anytime throughout the day to do an actual consult again every single day on the patient, follow the patient, and is within the seven minutes, you're able to reach out to them and get them on the phone if you have an emergency. I'm comfortable with that program. So, once again, how does that impact volumes? Just last month alone, we would have been able to hold 12 additional patients here that we shipped if we'd have had neuro-coverage. So, that's 12. Average length of stay on our patients is about 3.6, 3.8 days. I don't have the actual neuro-DRG to see exactly how that is, and I know there's people in the room who probably tell me. But what I'm telling you is, you get me 12 patients consistently, that's probably going to keep a floor open. But the other thing it's going to do is it's going to give the ED confidence to see those patients and treat those patients, and then what you may actually start seeing is it's more than 12. So, that's just one program. It delivers a better cross-section of services to our community. To me, it's considered bread-and-butter medicine, it's something that we shouldn't be shipping out of here. If you need a new heart, lung, kidney, liver, okay, we're going to get you downtown to a facility that specializes in that. But really, neuro, right? We should be able to handle that here. So, that program allows us to do that. The other is, we're going to continue, the other thing for volume is, we're going to continue our ease-of-use campaign. They're doing a great job. The feedback from the physicians, some of them, by the way, are not saying, "Wow, you flipped the switch, and you're the easiest hospital to use in the state of Tennessee." But what they have done is seen that we're trying and have re-engaged to actually begin giving us feedback about how we can get better, where before, they had completely checked out and just stopped trying to get a patient in. Well, at least now, they're going, "You know what? The same barriers and problems exist, but I do believe you. I believe that you've got people out there that are questioning us and trying to work through the process to make it easier for us to get patients into you." They're seeing progress. And because of that, there's better dialogue, they're sending more patients our way just because of that. So, ease-of-use and teleneurology, we get more volumes, because what we know is that in this volume-based reimbursement world, which we're moving out of, but that we have metrics, and we know that for every screening test, it translates into a diagnostic test, which translates into a procedure, which potentially translates into an inpatient stay, there's a cycle. The more patients that come through for outpatient things translates into more inpatient volume down the road. By being easier to use, getting more patients through the door, all the volume problems start fixing themselves. So, keep focused on the ease-of-use campaign, you're doing a good job, don't take your foot off the gas. The other thing that we're doing is we're moving into the healthcare reform world, which is a wellness and prevention model. Wellness and prevention is essentially going full force into trying to put hospitals out of business. You're trying to work yourself out of business, right? It's what you're trying to do. You're looking at someone coming into the hospital and being admitted as a failure of the healthcare system. It means that somehow, in the outpatient world, we failed to manage their chronic diseases, their problems, their medications, or some other thing. So, in theory, that means the only patients that should be coming in here are car wrecks, right? Sudden changes of life that were unforeseen. That's all that should be in the hospital. Everything else, you should, if appropriately treated and handled, should be in the outpatient world. Well, that's the wellness and prevention model. We fully embrace that. We know that the right thing to do for patients in our community is to make sure they get the right level of treatment in the right setting, which is in those primary care physician's offices. Which means that we are working to have less volume in the hospital. But we don't want to have less volume in the hospital. So, what you've got to do is throw a bigger net, you've got to increase the size of your market. So, we've aggressively gone up into the Clarksville market, specifically the south side of Clarksville, into that Sangio area, using Pleasant View as a hub, to go up there, partner with those primary care physicians, we took ENT and Orthopedics, and we're making big inroads. To go up there, meet with those docs, pull more patients down, and because you all turned on a really good directed MIT process, using our own community docs as guinea pigs, we can go up there and let them know that we have an established directed MIT process that makes it easy for them to get their patients in, we have a great care coordination program which gets the patient back to them with the right information at the right time, and they're willing to send more and more patients down to us. So, teleneurology, surefire bet we're going to get a few more patients in here. Ease-of-use, you see more patients coming through the door, it'll translate into more inpatient volumes. Grow your market. We're growing that right now through ENT and Ortho, there's other things that we can bring up, bring up to that area. From a quality standpoint, we have fully embraced wellness and prevention and a quality model. That's what you all have done, we've talked about it before. At the end of February, a grading period ended within the Tennessee Hospital Association, and they released their figures in March. What it revealed in March is that of the 82 hospitals that participated in the Tennessee Hospital Association Quality Program, which is basically all Tennessee hospitals minus a couple, when you grade them all, and they're graded on readmissions, mortality scores, patient satisfaction, and core measures. Core measures, for those that don't remember, heart attacks, congestive heart failure, pneumonia, and surgery, okay? If you put all of those into a matrix and grade all the hospitals out, well, that's what the Tennessee Hospital Association did. Northcrest Medical Center came out and was ranked number one in the state of Tennessee across all those metrics. Number one. That doesn't mean that we're the best in middle Tennessee, that doesn't mean that we're the best in our geographic area. That means we're absolutely 100% the best hospital from a quality standpoint in the entire state of Tennessee. What that also does, it puts us in the top 2% in the nation. So, what I can look at you all and say is that you look at the mission and vision statement that's sitting out there on the website, or wherever you want to read it, to see that we challenged ourselves to be the best 150-bed-or-less hospital. Now, you're the best hospital, bar none. I don't care how many beds they have, I don't care what services they offer, I don't care if they're world-renowned or not. You all kicked their butts. You distanced yourselves from them, you outcompeted them, you had the same set of rules. Now, as we move further and further into a wellness and prevention model, insurance companies are coming to us. And what they're saying is, here's a criteria upon which we want to grade you, and that's going to determine how much we pay you when that Blue Cross Blue Shield Aetna-Signa patient comes in here. Well, what we're able to do is take that criteria, look at it, take out our big stack from our quality review committee, or our CUSP teams, put it in front of them, and say, "Not only did we meet all of your criteria, we did all these other things, too." And I don't have three weeks of a track record behind it, I have three years of a track record behind it. We have pulled away from the pack in terms of quality scores. We have made this hospital incredibly marketable, incredibly well-positioned to go forward into a new payment method, which is basically a wellness and prevention model. Now then, I'm always not giving enough weight to what is also happening in the physician services side of the organization. So, we have physician services, we have the hospital, and we have the foundation, those are the three components of this organization. As you all went through some very, very challenging times, October through December, in terms of cuts, PDO accrual, pension, non-paid time off, all that good stuff, right? The Physician Services Corporation went through that as well. Now, they are in their next iteration, which is us sitting down and renegotiating 100% of the physician contracts. And what we are asking the physicians to do is commit with us to a growth goal. See more patients, treat more patients, get more patients into the hospital. Creates disruption, but what I can tell you is that it absolutely has solidified the physicians. You want to talk about a commitment level? They go through that process with us, that contracting process, they come out on the back end, they understand what the expectations are, what the expectations are for the organization, and they feel engaged, because that's what we're working with them on. Run the practice like it's your own practice, keep your expenses low, keep your volumes high, and let's go. Get into growth mode. Now then, unfortunately, sometimes those changes do have negative consequences. Anybody heard anything going on with Ortho? So, Ortho, the Orthopedics Docs, we began the contract negotiation period with them. Started out with Cutright, Daher, and Dr. Beauchamp. Dr. Cutright is leaving us. What I would tell you is this, the next time I need to negotiate my employment contract with this facility, with the board, I need Dr. Cutright in the room. Because that man negotiated a contract with Henry County Medical Center in Paris, Tennessee, that is really, really good. It's a great contract. It puts him there with a wonderful contract, near Kentucky Lake where his houseboat is, near an airfield where he lands his plane. It's a good deal, good work-life balance. Dr. Cutright is an outstanding board-certified orthopedic that I hate is leaving this community. He's a good guy, and he's a good doctor. He worked himself out a good deal that I can't match. Now then, Dr. Daher and Beauchamp. Dr. Daher's been Springfield Orthopedics for a very long time. Great guy, well-respected, outstanding surgeon. Dr. Beauchamp, a little bit newer to us, same thing, though, go check out his reputation up in Clarksville. Great guy, great reputation, great surgeon. Both of them committed to this program. Dr. Beauchamp is under contract, Dr. Daher is essentially under contract, it's just sitting with the lawyers, and they're deciding if the subject and verb agrees in every single sentence. Once that happens, we'll get him under contract, and everything will be good, but he's already verbally committed that he's here. That said, they both committed to taking Dr. Cutright's volumes, absorbing them into their own practice, and taking off and running. So, let me circle back around to volumes. We have all of our docs in new contracts committed to growth. We did lose Dr. Cutright, but I got a commitment from both the remaining orthopedic surgeons that they're going to be absorbing the growth and growing. Everyone's in growth mode. Everyone's moving forward, everyone understands the importance of the Clarksville market, everyone understands ease-of-use and customer service, and we have absolutely lapped the field in terms of quality. We did it inside the hospital. The other commitment level that the physicians made, the Physician Services Corporation, is judged by the Quality Committee called NCQA. Physician Services, there's only three levels of NCQA, level three is the top. Physician Services, as a group, has jumped into that program, was most recently graded, and came out as a Level 2 NCQA group. Now, what that means is, it's kind of odd that if you go over and you see Dr. Westerkamp in the ENT office, you are going to be questioned about colonoscopy, mammogram, a flu shot, pneumovax, and all these different things. Well, why is that? It's because NCQA believes in the holistic treatment of a patient, and they don't care what medical provider touches that patient, every single one should be concerned about their medication management and all the preventative measures that should have gone on. Well, they've fully embraced that. Dr. Furlan's office achieved Level 3 NCQA certification, the highest level of certification that you can achieve. Which means that anytime they secret shopped his office, they were able to get a same-day appointment. Anytime they audited any chart, they saw that all preventative measures had been taken, that he did a full exam on all patients, all the documentation was done, medications were managed, and the patients had been treated appropriately. So, if you see him, and by the way, it was all the providers in his office, so if you see him and any providers in his office, you let them know that they absolutely knocked it out of the park. We're only talking about a handful of physician practices that have achieved that level of certification, and you've got that one here in your, in your community. The physicians are committed to growth and committed to quality, they're achieving it in their own practices. The hospital is focused towards growth, and is committed to quality, and is achieving it. We are very, very well-positioned to move forward. So, the last thing that started off by talking about the fact that I'd made you a promise, and it wasn't going to be me talking the entire time, right? So, I'm about to turn it over. The other promise that I made was that I understood that I was asking you all to bear a huge burden in terms of the cuts that we had to make within this organization. To sit there and maintain a high commitment level while we walked out many of your friends that had been here with you for years, while we slashed expenses trying to get down below a certain threshold. And what we said was, if we can, we need to make this up to you to the best of our ability. So, hopefully, you'll see it as a good token of what we are attempting to do, to basically tip our hat to you, to say, "We understand the cuts that you made, and the sacrifices that you made to get us where we are. And I think we're well-positioned, and I think we're going forward, and we want you on board, and we want to keep you committed, but now we want your loyalty morale as well." July 4th this year falls on a Friday. All departments that don't render patient care or have direct patient contact, which we're going to be taking off on July 4th, your department will still remain closed. However, you'll be paid, and we will not pull time out of your PDO bank. The other thing that we're --
Hey! That's really good, hey?
The other thing is for all clinical departments, or all patient-facing departments that are unable to close, if you work on July 4th, you'll receive a voucher that you can use for the next time that you do take a PDO day, all right? And so, that's about the most details that I'm going to get into, because I'm going to let Amber talk about the rest, because I'll mess it up if I go any deeper than that, they only inform me enough to know, and then I can get the rah-rah speech out, right? But, but I hope that you can see, first of all, I hope you see this several things. One is, we're trying to make good on any of the promises that we make to you, that, "Look, we understand, we've got some short-term sacrifices, but we're going to get this thing heading in the right direction, and we're going to do well. We're open and transparent with you. I think that you can see that we are doing well, we are on the right track, and there's a very, very bright future ahead of you. So, now, let's start getting you kind of back and made as whole as possible." All right? Any questions about any of that? I'll open it up for all questions at the end, but any brief about that, I'll let Amber continue talking about the actual PDO thing, okay? All right, well, with that said, it is going to be Amber, and then after that, we'll let Angie talk, and Kim will wrap it up.
All right, well, I have figured out when to cue myself to take a picture, so I've been taking pictures since it's Hospital Week, and been putting them on Facebook, right? So, for the first two sessions, I was just snapping pictures. Now, I've figured out to take the picture after Randy mentions PDO time, so. Everybody had big, smelly grins, everybody loves Town Hall. So, yeah, so I'm going to talk to you about the how of the process for the PDO, and then Kim's going to come up a little bit later and talk about the why we chose to do it that way. So, as far as the how, HR Department and accounting are going to work together to look at that defined period of time in which PDO was frozen. So, we'll look at that, and then we'll look at those employees who would be eligible, so those that fell into that category. For the full-time employees who are not direct patient care, so just as Randy mentioned, for those that are not direct patient care, who are mandated to take off that July 4th, you will receive your pay, you don't have to take out your PDO. What do you need to do? Absolutely nothing. It'll automatically be done for you. You don't need to call us and ask, "Am I eligible?", don't have to do anything. For those of you who are clinical and work that day, or if you're clinical, and maybe you've already worked your hours that pay period, and you're not planning on taking July 4th off, you will also be notified from HR, and also your timekeeper will know as well. You'll receive an email verification with a voucher on it, and that voucher will entitle you to take a different day within a certain time period, probably two to four weeks, that you can select a different day as an alternate. And then, whenever you utilize that day, we'll just swap it out, so you don't lose that time. Last thing we want to do is say, "Here's a free gift, and you can't use it," right? So, for part-time employees, that's going to work a little bit different, so the part-time eligible employees, what we will give them are two hours free, basically. So, if you're going to be off on July 4th, you'll have two hours free for that. Another thing that you need to know in regards to that is, like, at the end of the time of the pay period, that it can't cause overtime, so we'll have some specifications in the voucher there of how you can utilize the PDO time, but we'll get all that into that in the email, but it'll be a simple process, so. Okay? And then, Randy spoke a couple Town Halls ago, I think, and maybe the first one, in regards to, you know, growth and volumes, but also about quality, and about privacy, and how in order to get the community and our patients here to Northcrest, they also need to feel, like, no matter who they are in this community, that they deserve the respect and the dignity that a patient deserves. And so, what we've done in the Compliance Department is create a facility risk management program. And so, what that does is, we have a team of individuals, myself, Kim, Laura Baggett, a couple of different people throughout the facility, and we are going to be increasing our privacy efforts. And what that means for you all is it's actually educational. And so, I noted that over, like, probably the last three months, we put out some information about faxes and faxing. And sometimes, we just don't think about going to the fax and making sure that the pre-programmed numbers are accurate and things of that nature. So, putting out some tidbits of information that we find from our PHI audits, and PHI is Protected Health Information. So, we'll be doing those audits more regularly, and with that, we can hopefully increase privacy here at Northcrest. That's not to say that we have a problem with privacy here at Northcrest, that's just saying that we're taking those added extra measures to make sure that we have privacy for our patients. We talk about our pillars, you know, people, service, finance, quality, and growth. We want to make sure that we have integrity, and I tell that to all of our new employees in orientation, that we don't just want a compliance program, we want an integrity program. So, we don't just check off those boxes from the government, we check them off because it's who we are and what we do. Also with that, there are some times in which, maybe just from human error, we all make mistakes, correct? And we can't fix things if we don't know about them, if we don't know that they're broken. But there are times in which maybe a medical record, you know, they're quite large, there may be a medical record in which another individual's medical information's been scanned in between there, and it's just taking that added extra time and effort to audit through those information and make sure that they're in there correctly. So, within the Northcrest Weekly, what we'll be doing is adding integrity investigation reports, and that's not a finger-pointing exercise. That is to keep privacy at the forefront of all of our minds. Not going to be on a weekly basis, even though it's the Northcrest Weekly, it'll probably be quarterly, but that's just simply to state, we've had three PHI happenings, and this is what they consisted of. Maybe it was, you know, missed fax feeds, or maybe it was inappropriate access. And that's when we can look at the trends. So, when we think about inappropriate access, all of us have access to different programs depending upon our job. And what I found, just being in the compliance role for the short time that I've been in there, we'll have to, I feel like it's short, but I guess it's probably been longer than shorter. My health time flies when you're having fun. But, what we do is look at the programs, and I can't tell you how many times I've had conversations with, for instance, we'll have a complaint and says, "Well, I think Amber looked at my file because X, Y, and Z." Well, they'll look at the program, and it may not even be one that I need to have a particular access to. So, while I may need access to HMS, I may only need this much access. And so, what this will do is I can just completely not have to have that conversation at all, or I will not have to even have to look for that needle in the haystack, right? Because we've restricted the access to only my need-to-know for my job. So, it protects you, and it protects our patients. And then, the last thing is, we are delighted that it is Hospital Week, although it's been really busy so far, and it's only Wednesday on Hot Diggity Dog Day. And so, we have service awards tomorrow, right? And so, do not go to the Hampton Inn, we won't be there, so. Go to Highland Crest. So, please join us at Highland Crest if you have been, received an invitation, so we can celebrate your years of service. All right? Angie?
Yeah, I swallowed my cough drop, and I kind of choked it on it up here. If y'all see me turning blue, it'll melt in a minute. No, seriously, you know, we were talking about volumes, and I really did, but, we were talking about volumes, and what, so, I asked myself, you know, we've had the third floor closed. If y'all see me turning blue. It'll melt in a minute. No, seriously, you know, we were talking about volumes, and I really did, but we were talking about volumes, and what, so I asked myself, you know, we've had the third floor closed. What can I do as an employee of Northcrest? How can I help to fix the problem? How can I help to bring in more volume? And what can you do? So if every one of us sought out five patients, just five people we know, that don't normally come here, and ask them, you know, "Would you come here and get your lab work done? Come here and get your mammogram done? Or anything you need? Come to our emergency room?" If every one of us solicited five new business prospects, think how much business we would have. And as Randy earlier pointed out, we know that testing leads to inpatient admissions and so forth, so forth. Think how much volume each one of us could bring back in. Number one, that's cheap, it doesn't cost us a thing, right? Number two, we are the best ambassadors for our business. You know, people call us all the time, whether you're clinical or you're not clinical. People will call you up and they'll say, "Do you, do you have a good..." "My daughter's pregnant, do you have a good OB doctor up there?" You know? Well, yes, we do. As a matter of fact, we do. But just take it one step further. Not only do we, but let me give you the name and phone number of who you need to contact. Do you do mammograms up there? We sure do. Let me give you the name and the number of who you need to contact. Then kind of follow back up with them, a week or two later, and "Did you, did you go, did you go to Springfield? Did you go to Northcrest to have that done? You know, was everything I told you was going to be plus?" See what they say. If it wasn't, let someone in senior admin, or let your coordinator know, so that we can fix that. Let's do ease of use for our patients, not only our physicians, but our patients also. You know, I've got a code, I've got a head code. "Do you think there's a doctor up there that could see me today?" Absolutely, we'll get you in. And think how many, how many patients and how much business we ourselves can go out and get, right? I tell patients all the time, you know, I live in a different county, and I tell people all the time that call me, "Go to our emergency room, because I promise you, you can get in there quicker than you can anywhere else." But I know quicker than where other hospitals are. Can I get another amen? I'm serious, and then that's the truth. They can drive up here and get into our emergency room quicker. Let's talk a little bit about nursing. I know that we've had several nursing resignations lately, as some of you may or may not know. They are census-driven, their work is census-driven, so we've been calling them off a lot. So some of them have left because they could not earn a full paycheck, they didn't get to work all of their hours. And then that causes a little bit of a crisis, okay, so how do we handle that? Because we've got nurses leaving, what are we going to do? Well, there's a fine balance there. If we hire back in those positions that have been vacated, then people still don't get to work. However, if we don't hire back in them, are we in a staffing crunch? It depends. It depends on what the census does. It depends on how many patients we all recruit to come in here. I don't have a glass ball, and I can't tell you what's going to happen. We can only make assumptions. But I think, as a previous staff nurse, I would rather pick up an extra shift every week or two, when it's busy, than to have to hire more nurses to come in here and then I only get to work one day a week. Does that make sense? So we're trying to find that balance. So does anyone have any questions? Comments? My cough drop melted.
Hopefully, you'll go out here with good news, that this is, I hope you take this as a very good uplifting town hall meeting. Y'all, you're doing well. You're doing so well. And it's, it's what you do every day that's the quality, it's what you do every day that makes us easy to use, and it's what you do every day that resonates in this community, and lets everybody know that we're their community hospital, we should be their provider of choice. For me, what allows me to go out there every day and talk to the civetans and kwanans and all this good stuff, and not actually do anything, is this team. And, you know, as we went through a whole lot of these changes, the one thing that I told you all that had to be done is that I look at spreadsheets, I look at numbers, and that Angie Beard's able to sit over there with that clinical mindset and remind us all that all these numbers, and all these quality scores, and all these things actually represent a patient. And she does a great job with that. She does a great job with the staffing models that are put in place from the clinical standpoint, being able to flex and keep expenses down. As we did some very, very aggressive moves, where I'm asking you all to remain committed, but I understand that sometimes loyalty and morale slip when we're asking all the things of you that we do, then what's outstanding about that is that you've got Amber King sitting over there going, "What about benefits? What about equal pay? What about advocating for the different moves that we're making?" And so she's been incredibly instrumental and fundamental to the things that we've been doing, and hopefully, as we're sitting here looking on the backside, yes, we've had some turnover, yes, we've had some moves, but I think that we're coming out of it. I hope you feel valued, and I hope that you feel that you've been taken care of to the best of our ability from an organization standpoint, and I hope that we've communicated to you in a transparent way as to why the moves are what we're doing. In between the last town hall meeting and this town hall meeting, there's something that I should have actually led off this town hall meeting with, and that's that I never did formally announce, that Kim Pridgen has stepped in officially as the permanent CFO for the organization. So what she's been able to do is, obviously, you've been able to see from the financials and be able to get us good information, but the one thing else that she adds to this organization that we need, if we're out there and we're talking about this community hospital, and the fact that we're engaged in the community and part of the community, then you better be beyond reproach in terms of your integrity, in terms of what you're doing and why you're doing it. And you've got to have someone like Kim that can pull back on someone like me, that's sitting out there going, "Why are you spending that? Is it the appropriate thing? What's the message behind it? You just made cuts over here, why are you contributing over here?" And have those good conversations to make sure that you've got your finger on the pulse of the community and the perception of the organization. Kim brings that. So what she also brings into the room today is that today is Kim's birthday.
Oh.
And so for her birthday, she's been able to sit in here and bring great news to you all, and I think that'd probably be the one thing that she would like to ask, that on her birthday, she were able to stand in front of you and talk about 89 days cash on hand, debt service coverage ratio, and actually just stand in front of a group of people and talk numbers. So I believe we probably gave Kim her birthday present, so thank you all for contributing to that. With that said, are there any questions about anything that we've covered that we've not talked about? Surely, there's got to be one. Okay. Well, then we'll just take it as that you're the third iteration of the town hall meeting, and so we've started proactively addressing all the questions that have come through. So thank you all for your time. Anything that we can do for you, please let us know. Doors are always open, and otherwise, I'll see you in the next town hall.